To solve the cocaine addiction problem.
Today is Monday, August 22nd. The time is 7:24 and I call this meeting to order. We're gonna have our invocation by Tonya Maya from the Public Christian Center tonight. If everybody would stand, stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would bow your heads, Father, we come before you tonight and we want to say thank you for this great city that we get to call home. Lord, I thank you for those who serve this city, city council, city government, the first responders. Father, I ask for your protection, your blessing over them. And Lord, we pray for our city. God, I ask that you would bring peace where there's been violence, that you would bring unity where there's been division. God, would you grant wisdom to our leaders tonight as they make decisions concerning our city? We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
Hey, roll call. Lari Tensio.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Here.
Vicente Martinez Ortega.
Here.
Lori Winner. Okay, no special recognitions tonight, so going right into public forum. Can we have Elvis Martinez wanting to talk about city council domestic violence and war?
Well, I'll just start off by saying rest in peace to Eva Montoya. Most of us probably knew her and everything. I first met her when I was in high school. So I know most of you guys probably known her longer than I've been breathing for 30 years, so on that part. And then, I'm not saying any names here, but at the last council work session two weeks ago, when that one lady came up here, we all know she was out of order and I'm surprised nobody called her out of order. She shouldn't have came up here. Like Ms. Martinez said, she could have signed up for public forum and spoke about whatever she wanted to speak about at that time. Just because she wants to get rid of the mayor, don't know why. There's several ways to get rid of an elected official, like I said last time. And I left out a few, either a recall, then they resign, a judge says that they're cuckoo, or they die while in office. That's how elective officials go bye-bye without voting them out. And then to move on, I know this is a broken record, but on this part first, I have a feeling that a certain council member may have influenced that person to come forward to talk about getting rid of the mayor. But I know that individual was mayor, she wouldn't want the mayor to be gone to go back to the city manager form of government. Those are just facts. And then, I know in 2020, I spoke about this and some of you guys, of course, weren't on council, but Mercy Leaf was gonna put together a symposium, but then COVID hit, which was stopping everything for people to congregate and everything. But if one of you guys or two of you guys could put on a symposium for domestic violence, at least to have it scheduled by the end of this year, and invite the Attorney General, the Governor, and other top elected officials, even if they don't serve the public community, other ones on both Republican and Democrat, because this is an issue that affects everybody, no matter what party you are, no matter what color you are or what gender you are. Those are facts. And then, just for the public to, as a reminder, and I know some council members might bring it up or the mayor might bring it up, but this Thursday at the Public Christian Center, there will be another presentation by Chief Noah and then questions afterwards. And Mr. Noah, if you could invite some other elected officials there that we spoke about last time too, that would be helpful. Thank you. And to get onto the broken record part real quick, most of the time, the women are the victims of domestic violence, but in some cases, the man is the victim. I don't know the percentage wise, I didn't do all of that stats. It's a shame when formal charges are brought forward due to lack of evidence. So the charges are dropped in those terms when it comes to domestic violence. I don't know what DA's are thinking. Then to go on, and then later, individuals could run for office and be elected. Transparent in, and on this part, this is just my personal opinion and probably some others, so I'm not speaking for anybody else besides myself. Transparency and integrity has been lost by some people sitting in front of me. When ethics complaints come up, they all get dismissed, which is bogus. I believe an independent body should review future ethics complaints when they come up and not city council. So the city council could pass an ordinance or a resolution or something like that to have an independent body of three, four, or five people get the facts when future elected officials get ethics complaints. And then those individuals, that group, the chairwoman or chairman or president, whatever, comes to city council and says, so-and-so, this was brought forward, and A, fits as dismissal or whatever, B, is dismissed, or so on and so forth, instead of city council voting, when most of you guys are friends and some of you guys know each other for a good time. So if that could be passed instead of city council, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Next, we have Mr. Frank Cirillo wanting to speak about the monument.
Good evening. Thank you. Haven't seen me in a while, but I'm here again. Couple more months, this is August, I know, but another month or so, October's coming up. And I still call it Columbus Day. It's, that's me. I would like to see, and I don't know who, if anybody could help me out on it, but I would like to see the front of the statue restored back to the way it used to be. That crest, as we all know, was red paint spent throwed on it. The, the whole front of it, it needs to be brought back to what it used to look like. And I don't know if it could be the city or Parks and Rec, but I would like to see that done maybe before Columbus Day, if all possible, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo, and that concludes our public forum, counselor and mayor commentary. Mayor, do you have anything tonight?
Just a couple items. As was mentioned during the public forum, we recently learned of the passing of Eva Montoya, who served on the city council as a representative from District Two. Our condolences go out to her family and we thank them for the services she's performed as a member of the city council. It's my understanding that the services are private and we'll try to respect that. Wanted to give you an update on the petitions that were being circulated in the community with respect to the excise tax on marijuana, and which would lower the excise tax to the excise tax imposed by three different cities, essentially making it zero, and also would also impose a retail sales tax on marijuana. Last week, the petitions were turned in. Those petitions have been looked at by the city clerk's office, and the city clerk's office has determined they were not sufficient. And the circulators filed statements today withdrawing that petition. So those two items will not be on the ballot in November. Finally, I'd like to remind everybody that the state fair starts this Friday, and it'll continue for 10 days. So we'll have a lot of events in town, we'll have a lot of visitors in town. And I hope everybody can put their best foot forward and be on their best behavior while we are playing host to the rest of the state of Colorado during this period of time. And that concludes my commentaries.
Councilor Martinez Ortega.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Last Friday, I had joined the Southern Colorado Neighbor Works in their monthly Bessemer Food Pantry. And they were working with, the last few months, we've been working with Jordan Residential, and they are a, a group of adults, special needs adults, who come and help out, give back to the community and give food to folks. That day, we actually fed 78 different families who drove through the Bessemer Food Pantry. And these folks, I'd like to thank the Jordan Residential folks for all of their hard work for the last three months, even during the heat on some of these Friday afternoons. Later that evening, I had went to Pablo Community College and enjoyed the Song of Pueblo. I will be asking the mayor's office to draft up a resolution. I'll pass on a, a letter asking for some city council contingencies to help 1,000 students view the Song of Pueblo, a historic kind of rendition of how Pueblo came about and is now. And lastly, I would like to mention the passing of somebody who I've heard many accounts of that I didn't know personally, but you could tell their impact has, they made a great impact on this community. She taught at Central High School, Ms. Conator. She was a longtime Pueblo educator. She passed away on the 15th of this month. Her funeral services are at 10 o'clock on Friday at the Central High School Gymnasium. And they ask, the family asked that you wear central colors for, or in spirit of Ms. Conator. That's all. Thank you.
Councilor Martinez.
Well, first, I want to say that the Domestic Violence Task Force does actually host a domestic violence symposium every year in February. It's normally at PCC. The Child Advocacy Center would have more information about that, so I wanted to address that. I was able to take a ride along with the Humane Society a couple of weeks ago. That was very exciting. We spend a lot of time really educating community members or like not to leave your dog outside in the heat in the summer day. So if you see a dog or a cat, we also found a lost domestic bunny, and we were able to capture it and return it, which I thought was very cute. But if you see a pet, if you want to report some type of injured or neglected animal, the number to call is 719-544-3005. And it was definitely a great ride along, so thank you to the Humane Society of the Pike's Peak Region for that. President Graham and I were also able to take a tour of the chemical depot. One thing that I didn't know, born and raised in Pueblo, is it's actually like three separate agencies just in one place. So you have the depot, which is the ones who really like take all of the different agent and store it, and basically safeguard it, and then they pass all of it to PCAP, which then uses magic to neutralize the agent. And fun fact, with our stormwater, did you know that they use bugs to also help neutralize the agent? And they get some of the bugs in their neutralizing plant from our very own stormwater, and we started a treatment plant. So that was a fun connection. And then they are taken to Pueblo Plex, which Pueblo Plex is figuring out some type of like really cool way to utilize all of the land and the infrastructure that's currently there. So thank you to all of the agencies at the depot for that fabulous tour. I also want to thank, thank our Public Parks and Rec Department. Stephen, you did a really great job with the curb cut at the Pueblo Pride. In fact, when I noticed the curb cut, there was actually someone utilizing the wheelchair on the curb cut when I noticed it. So thank you so much for that really quick response. And I hope that everyone has a really safe state fair. I'm really thankful that we were able to get those trash dumpsters outside. There's gonna be five or six. So let's just be respectful of that surrounding neighborhood, please. Thanks.
Counselor Tensio.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging our former council member Eva Montoya. I've known Eva since I was a young teenager over on the Lower East Side. She was a couple of years older than me, so she ran in another group, but I always knew about her. She was one of the first people, literally on the east side, to get a college education. She was an educator. She taught for 20, 30 years in the districts. She taught at a lot of the schools. Her impact on students and young people in this town is immeasurable. She really was a go-getter. And then when she got, she was always a community volunteer and everything she always did. Eastside was her passion. She, she was a state caliber softball player when she was young. So that was one of her passions. I just want to acknowledge that, condolences to her family and to everyone who knew her. It's gonna be a sad day when we, the day that she passed. And I just want to acknowledge that she was a great, great lady and a great advocate for not only the east side, but Pueblo in general and, and young people and students in particular.
Counselor Maestri.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I had the honor and privilege of serving back in 2014 when I was appointed to city council with Eva Montoya. And she was, she was quite a lady. She had a passion for the Lower East Side. But she was a graduate of SCSC and also got her master's degree from University of Colorado in Boulder. But she taught elementary school at Washington, at Irving, and then Parkview, I think she was there for a while. But she had a great impact on the young people. That was her focus. In fact, she, she was one of the founders of a club, I think it was called Casa Verde. They did nothing but support the children and kept them busy with doing lots of things. So I think about her. I used to sit next to her for those 14 months and I got to know her. And she was quite a lady and I extend my sympathy to her family, and she is a loss to our community. The only other thing I have to add, and I wanted to, to extend my thanks to Trevor Gloss, who works for our city attorney. He's one of our staff attorneys. I had asked the question last week about how we can tighten up our weed ordinance and posed several questions to him, I think on Monday, and he had an answer for me by Tuesday afternoon. It was amazing. But at the end of the day, because of due process and some other things, he was right on the money. And there's really nothing more than we can do. We have some pretty tight ordinances when it comes to controlling our weeds. But something good arose out of that and that I think we probably should provide support in the months of July, August, September, and October, where we could hire four part-time employees that could, that do nothing but, you know, cite people for, and we have a number of people that are just, you know, repeat offenders constantly. And he had asked, a citizen had asked me, why, why do we have to keep going back and giving them notice? We should just find them on the spot, but that's not the way it operates. So following the right rule, I think problems like that is something that I will bring up at budget time. And because it will take additional funds to hire what I would consider four individuals, one per quadrant in our city, just to help during those four-month periods. And I'm not gonna follow through on this. I am getting the input from Karen Wilson and also Judge Sykes to see if they think that's a good idea. But sometimes when you don't get the answer you want, sometimes another solution crops up. And I plan to follow through on that during our budget process. That's all I have.
Counselor Winner.
Thank you. I guess I had a question about the Pueblo Food Project that maybe Laura can answer. I thought that they were kind of coordinating with all the organizations in town as far as food distribution. Kind of what got my attention is that the Sunnyside Market has been closed from August 1st through September 6th. And I didn't know that was closed. I wondered why. And also, when you go on to the Pueblo Food Project's website, it just lists two things on, in every month, which is their meeting and then the Bessemer food distribution. But, I mean, so then I just started looking around and it's super confusing about what's going on and where food is available.
Thank you. I can, I can answer what I know here. I did not know about the Sunnyside Market closed either, but I did see where the Care and Share update would be on the September 6th work session, which would be good. But Care and Share work, food is received from the federal government through USDA, and the Pueblo Food Project also coordinates with Care and Share. However, the current pantry provides access to the providers, to the, to the deliverers of food. And it is on its last distribution, the inventory is waning until today, when we did receive another $20,000 to, to directly to restock the pantry. And then there are 20 agencies that do request electronically food that is either delivered or they pick up from the pantry itself. And then we'll be waiting to hear on the receipt of two additional grants, one from DOLA, that is the CDBG money out of the state, and have applied for 120 to 150,000 dollars. That would restock the food pantry, access to those agencies through the winter months, likely all the way until April. They're continuing to look for sustainability without those grant dollars, you know, the food pantry does weighing in its inventory on what they have available to those 20 agencies. I can find out more about Care and Share because I do not know more.
And how about the Pueblo Food Project's calendar? I mean.
That I will look into.
It seems like it would be nice to have everything that's being distributed on their calendar, since they're kind of central, central to all this.
Well, they don't really, they distribute by request. So by those individual agencies that request tortillas, request produce this time of year would be coming in, but it could be sausage, it could be locally sourced food. So I will ask for an update for you, but also I want to go look at the website as well, because it is down to, you know, the one individual that, that is coordinating their food project. And we, where we did have someone who was coordinating the website as well. So I'll go and have the conversation with her when I see her next.
I mean, if you just go on, online and type in food pantry, food distribution, Pueblo, Colorado, it is really confusing.
Yes, because they do not distribute to the consumer. They are accessible to the providers that do distribute to the consumer.
No, I mean, just in general, if you just do a search, it's super confusing. Vicente, you said you had 78 families at the Bessemer Food Distribution. Do you run out of food or do you have food left over?
That depends on the, some, protein usually goes the quickest. So whether it's like the gagliano sausage, things like that, those usually go quicker because there's less. Sometimes there's, I think this last Friday, there was some grapefruit that was leftover, like actual grapefruits. But just, it just varies. It varies, but so those go to other smaller food pantries beyond what, what doesn't get used. I know like they've taken it to PCC, they've taken it to, I can't think of them at the top of my, off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Counselor Flores, did you have?
Yeah, I just, coincidentally, today I talked to Deja Shaw, Karen Scher, and she said they did have the previous manager of the Sunnyside Market, he resigned. And so they've been looking for someone, but they have found someone that will reopen the store on September the 6th. So she said they had just, they just couldn't replace the previous manager that quickly. But they did have a distribution, their mobile distribution center come on certain days to kind of pick up the slack. But they were having the same kind of issue, a lot of businesses in town, just finding somebody that could manage the market. But it'll reopen up again on September the 6th. And just to understand their model, the pantry itself is really unique to Care and Share. They don't do kind of the retail kind of look. They basically act as a wholesaler. They have over 50 nonprofits that distribute food in Pueblo. So it is confusing because they give food to Care and Share, they give it to Pesada, they give it to Steelworks Museum, whoever wants to distribute it, but they act as a wholesaler. And I think that's, that's where the confusion comes in. But Care and Share has their own autonomy, and the Food Project has their own, have their own autonomy.
Yeah, I was just stating that if you, if you do a search online, it's really confusing. You should, you should try it. So if you're, if you're in need, it's really confusing. I think we need something that's more centralized.
Okay, anybody else? I don't have anything tonight, so we're gonna review and approve the agenda. And we're gonna go page by page. So page one, page two, page three, page four, page five.
Madam Chair, we'd request that item R1 be continued until September the 12th.
Page six. Yeah, that's it. Anybody else? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to amend the agenda, moving R1 to September 12th.
And do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes 7-0. Reading and approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to dispense the minutes?
May I move to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated Monday, August 8, 2022, as distributed?
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, consent agenda.
L Communications, non-submitted. M Resolutions. Item M1, a resolution ratifying an emerging construction, emergency construction contract in the amount of $6,188 with Parker Excavation, Inc., for emergency sanitary sewer point repair at 1142 Brickley, project number 20-059, WWAN03, and approving the purchasing agent's execution of same. Item M2, a resolution establishing project CI 2212 Ice Arena Cooling Tower project, transferring $37,647 from Capital Project CI 1811 and CI 1111 into project CI 2212, and authorizing the transfer of $42,399.53 from Lottery Projects LT 1113, LT 1402, LT 1701, LT 1902, and LT 2201 into project LT 2202 Ice Arena Cooling Tower replacement project. And M3, resolution transferring $20,000 to the South Point Special Improvement Maintenance District Budget from the project's speed to German operating budget line account into the repair and maintenance operating budget line account. And M4, a resolution authorizing issuance of a revocable permit to the Colorado State Fair for use of the small avenue right-of-way between Euclid and Scranton Avenue to allow for parking school bus, band buses, and equipment vehicles. And M5, a resolution authorizing the issuance of our revocable permit to the Pueblo Community College for the use of Ormond Avenue between Harrison Avenue and Arthur Street and their right-of-ways to hold a welcome back to campus event on Monday, August 22nd, 2022. And M6, a resolution authorizing the issuance of our revocable permit to the Pueblo Bulls Hockey Club for the use of Grand Avenue and Wrightsaway in between West City Center Drive and West Second Street on September 10th, 2020, to hold their opening night celebration. Item M7, a resolution authorizing issuance of our revocable permit to YMCA Pueblo for the use of the portion of Spalding Avenue and Parker Boulevard on September 10th, 2022, to hold the 2022 Corporate Cup 5K Run Walk Event. Item M8, a resolution authorizing the issuance of our revocable permit to YMCA Pueblo for the use of Spalding Avenue and 31st Street on September 15th, 2022, to hold the 2022 Corporate Cup One Mile Event. Item M9, a resolution accepting the findings of and adopting the new airport master plan. Item M10, a resolution confirming the appointment by the mayor of Tiffany Garcia to the ADA Advisory Committee. Item N1, N ordinances, first presentation. Item N1, an ordinance establishing community outreach program, project number PS 2202, approving a cooperation agreement between Pueblo AAA Corporation and accepting budgeting and appropriating funds, the amount of $8,042 to said project. Item N2, an ordinance establishing 2023 Pueblo Rural Transportation Planning Project and budgeting and appropriating funds, the amount of $7,400 to said project. Item N3, an ordinance amending zoning restrictions to Rezone 1221 East Abriando Avenue from B4, Central Business District to CCN, Commercial Charter Neighborhood. Item N4, an ordinance vacating to 20-foot public utility and drainage easements located within Blocks 3, 4, and 5, Villa Bella subdivision, filing number one, and unimproved CBI Drive in the eastern portion of unimproved Napoli Way. Item N5, an ordinance changing the street name of Napoli Way to Medici Way. Item N6, an ordinance approving the Villa Bella filing number two subdivision. Item N7, an ordinance approving and accepting a lease and management agreement between the City of Pueblo, a Colorado Municipal Corporation, and the Pueblo Bulls Hockey Club, Inc., the Colorado Corporation for the Management, Operation, and Promotion of the Pueblo Ice Arena, and authorizing the mayor to execute same.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve all resolutions set forth by, in the consent agenda, pass the ordinances of the consent agenda. Setting the public hearings for Monday, September 12th, 2022, and ordinances to be published by title.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero, regular agenda.
Item Q1, a resolution authorizing the payment in amount not to exceed $250,000 from project CI 2113 American Rescue Plan Act. For Governance Services Project to relocate and replace fiber lines is authorized by Section 603 Print C, Print 1, Print C. Of the American Rescue Plan Act and U.S. Treasury Final Rule 31 CFR 35.6.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. This resolution is to remove three major fiber lines that the city uses to provide service for most of the city departments. We're currently running down the road, it's for HARP, the HARP extension. So this, or this resolution would expend Mondays out of the ARPA fund. To take those three main corridor fibers and relocate them so that they can go ahead and move forward with the HARP extension.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item Q2, a resolution awarding construction contract in the amount of $755,305.50 to Martin Marietta Materials, Inc. And setting forth $160,000 for contingencies for project number 22-063 Asphalt Paving Phase 2 and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. The resolution before you is a resolution to award a construction contract to Martin Marietta. For this particular project is for paving Northern Avenue from approximately Prairie to Pueblo Boulevard. Uh, this work is going to take place this fall, and this is hopefully the first of several more that we bring in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Flores?
I, I travel this area all the time, and I notice that right about where you get to South High School. I don't care when they fix the potholes there, they resurface. Is there something gone, is there something underneath the ground that causes that? Because there's always potholes there. Then I know our city streets department repair them all the time, but it doesn't last very long.
Right, so there, this is part of our degradation of streets being an issue, right? So as we see streets degrade, we do go out and patch, but the patches only last so long. And the potholes tend to appear much faster over time. Clearly, that's an issue. I'm not sure the specific section you're referring to, if there.
It's the South High School football.
Next, okay.
Right in that area.
There, there are areas of town that we inspect much more frequently because we know that this tendency exists. Uh, Dillon Drive, for instance, is one, uh, other areas as well. But this particular stretch here between Pueblo Boulevard and Northern is a known stretch as well. There are also sections there, some of the stoplights where you see some heaving of the pavement. Uh, all of these things are going to be corrected as part of this project. But the concrete work that we typically see on a lot of the projects has already been done out there. So this is just strictly the paving work. We're able to tackle this one quickly and get this one done this fall.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item Q2, 3, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account in the 2022 General Fund Budget to United Way, Pueblo County. In the amount of $500 to support the campaign kickoff luncheon.
This is for the United Ways 100 Year Celebration for their kickoff campaign. It's Wednesday, September 7th, and this will buy a table. And you can get with the mayor's office if you would like to go.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do I have a second? Um, any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item Q4, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds from the council contingencies account in the 2022 General Fund Budget to Pueblo County. In support of the 2022 Holiday Lighting Ceremony.
This is for the holiday lighting, um, this year it'll be Tuesday, November 22nd. It's really cool, they put on a great show, um, but it's very expensive for them to put this on. Um, from 5:00 to 7:00, they'll have food trucks, and I think law enforcement, fire department usually has trucks and stuff out there. So take your little ones, they serve hot cocoa, it's really fun. It's kind of hard to think about Christmas time when it's 100 degrees outside, but we're almost there. So I'm asking for this $500 in support for the lighting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item Q5, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account to the 2022 General Fund Budget. Uh, to Yabara's Boxing in the amount of $1,500 to support its boxing event.
May we have a staff report?
That was my request, Mr. Yabara asked that we help him support their bringing in close to 200 boxers. Along with their coaches and managers, and this is USA Boxing in conjunction with USA Boxing. This $1,500 is going to go towards paying referees and for trophies and for extemporaneous. Mislyus, um, things that need to be paid for, for this. Uh, by the way, those 200 boxers that are coming, they're all staying in our hotels, they're eating in our restaurants. Uh, we'll probably make more off of this than, than we're contributing. So I would ask that we help with this endeavor.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Mr. Attencio, when does that start in the?
Uh, end of September, I believe.
Yeah, the 10th through the 15th, is that? It's at the convention center?
Yeah.
September 15th, 16th and 17th. Okay, sounds good. Q6.
Item Q6, a resolution confirming the appointment of Andrea Arns to the position of Director of Wastewater.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President, members of council, I am proud and pleased to submit for confirmation and for your consideration. Andrew Arns for the position of wastewater director. She's been the acting interim director of the wastewater treatment plant since February, following the retirement of Nancy Keller. Uh, Andrew's been employed by the City of Pueblo since February of 2017. When Nancy retired, we announced the vacancy and conducted a nationwide search. There were approximately eight to 10 applicants for this position. After interviews, I decided to appoint Andrea. She has a degree in environmental science from Metropolitan State University in Denver in 2005. And was the regulatory compliance specialist for the wastewater department before being appointed as the interim director. In total, she has about 14 years' experience in the industry, and I believe that she'll do an outstanding job for us as the director. Over the past several months, you've had an opportunity to hear from Andrea in reports to the city council. On questions with respect to her department, and she's available here for you this evening. If you have any questions, I wholeheartedly urge your affirmation of her appointment as the wastewater director. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Congratulations.
Thank you all for the confidence you've bestowed in me, and I look forward to serving the city of Pueblo, which I have fallen in love with.
Thank you.
Our ordinance is final presentation. Item R2, public hearing, an ordinance approving and accepting the Colorado Department of Transportation, C.D.O. Aeronautics Division, Grant Number 22-PUB-01. For funds in the amount of $18,412 for both the runway 8R-26L rehabilitation design and the snow removal equipment acquisition projects. Authorizing the mayor to execute same, budgeting and appropriating $7,725 to project number AP 2205 Rehab Runway 8R-26L. Design and construction and budgeting and appropriating $10,687 to project number AP 2201. Snow removal equipment SRE introduced August 8th, 2022 by Counselor Larry Attencio.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, councilors, Mr. Mayor. Two weeks ago, council approved and accepted funding from the FAA for these two projects mentioned in the title. This ordinance tonight, quick and easy, is just CDOT's portion of their grant match. So with that, we'll be able to put our project together and, and start moving forward on this, on these two projects. That concludes my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the ordinance on final presentation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Okay, pass seven zero. Thank you.
Item R3, public hearing, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Pueblo and the Pueblo Regional Building Department. For the sharing of costs related to the Pueblo Means Business Web Portal and authorizing the mayor to execute same, introduced August 8th, 2022 by Counselor Larry Attencio.
May we have a staff report?
Hello and good evening again. This ordinance is approving a cost-sharing agreement with Pueblo Regional Building. To support the Pueblo Means Business Initiative that we're currently been working with for a, a long time with Pueblo County. So this covers about 25% of the cost to, and for regional to enter into agreement. And we'll be responsible for covering 25% of those costs on an annual basis to go ahead and bring this to fruition. And that ends my report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call, oh, Council Martinez?
Lori, I don't know if you maybe know the answer to this, but do you know when? I know that we talked about it a little bit too, about the Wells Fargo building. Do you know when that's going to open or? Plans about Wells Fargo building at all?
Yeah, we don't know. Uh, the county's moving forward. I think they're, um. I'm not sure if they're in the bidding process. I mean, we have had architects looking at the pop, at the parts that, um, we're, we're going to purchase. But, um, sometime next year, I think, is when they plan to do the work on the first floor for the Pueblo Means Business.
No further questions? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R4, public hearing, an ordinance approving a grant agreement between the City of Pueblo. A municipal corporation in the state of Colorado, acting by and through the Colorado Department of Natural Resources and authorizing the mayor to execute same. Introduced August 8th, 2022 by Counselor Larry Attencio.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. A grant award providing for six weeks of crew time from the Department of Corrections, Swift Crew to assist in wildland fire mitigation in three areas of the city. Acceptance of this grant has no financial impact. Approving this grant will allow us to have a concerted effort to reduce the wildland risk within the city limits. Focus areas along the Fountain River and the Arkansas River, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Flores?
What, what is the, uh, what is the mitigation going to look like? What, is it just cleanup along the fountain or?
It's gonna trim a lot of that aggressive plants that are down in that area. And then there's also a plan to plant something else to help keep that from coming back.
So you'll be able to remove, uh, the debris there or the, uh, which would really mitigate a fire if it really gets gone there.
But we're hoping to, yes.
Does that include removing limbs from trees too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Maestro, did you have?
Whatever, that was behind on the Fountain River, how, how long? How, how hundred, you know, 500 feet, how, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Um, you know, it is in the map and I don't have that, but I can look it up and get back to you. Um, but we're gonna start up near the outlook area, the Stormwater area that has a lot of reeds. Go down near the 47th and north of 13th area and clear out a lot of that area.
Thank you.
Uh, call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R5, public hearing, an ordinance submitting the zoning restrictions to rezone parcel 527306003 and 527306004. From A4 Agricultural 4 Zone District to I2 Industrial Zone District. Introduced August 8th, 2022 by Counselor Larry Attencio, the Planning and Zoning Commission at their July 3rd, 2022 regular meeting. But it's 6:00 to recommend approval with Commissioner Avalos absent.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President. This is a rezoning application that would rezone 2.9 acre parcels. From an A4 Agricultural Zone District to an I2 Industrial Zone District. Uh, the properties are located on the West Side Neighborhood, and they consist of two parcels that are bisected by an active railroad line. Parcels are currently undeveloped. They're generally located west of 12th Street, east of Jasper Street and west of Garnett Avenue. Uh, the neighborhood is characterized by a mixture of uses. Uh, some of those are industrial, there are some single-family homes, vacant properties, there's undeveloped land. And there is one landscaping business in the vicinity. The uses are set in a mixture of B3, I2, R2 and A4. So there's a whole conglomeration of different zone districts in that, in that area. The Pueblo Comprehensive Plan, uh, designates the property as light industrial, future land use category. Uh, light industrial is characterized by manufacturing, processing and various other industrial uses. The applicant is proposing to rezone to accommodate low-level industrial uses, equipment storage in the future. Uh, the property that is immediately to the south of this, uh, application is a roofing company and it's in an I2 Zone District. So, uh, that concludes my report, Madam President. Please enter the records and attachments for the case number Z22-10, dated July 13th, 2022. Before the Planning and Zoning Commission is part of the record for this hearing.
So ordered. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Counselor Maestro? You're off.
Type of business of the applicant?
Yeah, their application does not have a specific business. What they've indicated is that, um, it would either be a low-level industrial use or equipment storage. Is what they've identified in the application. Uh, in the I2 Zone District, there are a number of uses by right. Uh, there are uses with special use permits and there are uses that are conditional use permits. Um, so they would be eligible, uh, to do the uses by right. As well as conditional uses if they were able to meet the conditions of, of those types of uses.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote. Passes seven zero.
Item R6, public hearing, an ordinance admitting chapter one of Title 10, chapter one of, uh, Title 15 of the Pueblo Municipal Code. With regards to electric bicycles, electric scooters and other electric devices, introduced August 8th, 2022 by Counselor Larry Attencio.
May we have a staff report?
Madam President, we have Eva Cozleone, who's the Senior Transportation Planner for Payco, who's with us tonight, and she's gonna give the report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, mayor. So this ordinance is to amend our current code to allow for certain classes of e-bikes and electric scooters. And also for specific locations and also to set a speed limit of twenty miles per hour. Class three would not be allowed on our trails or paths. Class three goes up to twenty-eight miles per hour, which is. Very dangerous, but twenty miles per hour is a set speed limit. That's the highest they can go. This is to address a current popularity of these motor vehicles, our motor, motorized. Devices. In twenty seventeen, Colorado actually amended their state and we would be just following suit with that. Any questions?
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Yep, come on down.
So I can swear you in. Yep. Go ahead and hold, hold up your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And please turn on your microphone there and then go ahead and state your name loudly for the record.
Our homes.
Thank you.
My left foot. I had polio in nineteen forty-nine. I've been extremely active in your city, cleaning your state, county, city property. I clean up the state parks. I clean up Runyon all the way out to State Park. This bicycle are, are one similar to this with a larger battery. People need assistance. The, the worst thing that happens to me on this trail is. People that are trying to use the most absolutely. It's, it's, it's the most efficient. Form of, of. Transportation ever is a standard bicycle. But they use it and they want to get their heart beat up. So that's why this mirror is here. I have to watch for them. My wife and I have to watch for regular bicycle riders. They will take, they will take us down. We ride about twelve miles an hour. This is a level two. It has pedal assist and it has a throttle. You need the throttle really because you don't have any gears. It's one speed. So this, this is, this is really a fantastic piece of equipment. To, to utilize every day. I ride this. I have four vehicles. And a motorcycle licensed and insured, but I prefer this. This, this is just fact. So I, I really wish that you would consider passing this. Also, I'd like signage. We need signage. We need people to understand that we're there on a level three. I wouldn't even, I don't have a problem with level three. I'll tell you why. Level threes, unless you modify them, they will not go twenty-eight miles an hour. And at twenty-eight miles an hour, your feet are moving at blistering speed. You can't maintain it anyway. But so like I say. I would appreciate you voting in favor of this resolution. And, and also signage. And let me say this. At our, at our city parks, I helped several people transport. Their equipment for several of the, of, of the events we have. And I use this with a trailer. But you see it's state parks. I mean, city parks were not supposed to have electric bikes in city parks. So I expect somehow in the resolution that we could have an exception to where when we're loading gear for people. They need help. The city parks are very large. Parking is outside. So we do not have. The ability to carry all this gear. It, it's really difficult because most of us are elderly that do this. So I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Want to come on down and?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Robin Coe.
Robin Coe, thank you.
Hello, everybody. So I would like to advocate for walking. Walker. I'm on the trail. My husband and I are on the trail a lot, especially the river trail. We access it all over the place, all over the twenty-six miles. Beautiful river trail. It's one of the crown jewels of Pueblo. Currently, I didn't understand that currently e-bikes were not allowed. Because they are there. And so are off-street. Not legal, motorized motorcycles. I've seen cars on the trail. People whizzing by, every kind of conveyance you can think of has, is on the trail now. Even though there may be a sign here and there. So number one, I'm against this amendment. To leave it as pedestrian walkers and non-motors, motorized, non-E whatevers. On the trail. And also imposing a speed limit makes no sense. Because nobody on that trail knows how fast they're going or cares. And if you're in the way and don't move, they will go off-trail. And create some trouble off the trail. And so I've experienced this all up and down that twenty-six miles. So I'm against this amendment.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak? Come on down.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you should give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record.
Name is Ron Serna.
Ron Serna?
With the Pueblo Conservancy District. And we had talked about that speed limit being fifteen miles an hour on top of the levy. Twenty's too fast for the angles at the top of the levy. So if you pass the bill, it's good with us, but we need fifteen on top of that levy. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? We have a second? Any discussion? Councilor Flores?
Can you tell me on these trail systems, was there, was there something previous to this change? That allowed bicycle riders to be on the, I thought that bicycles were okay. So they, they were never just true, just pedestrian.
That's correct. There is always a lot of bicycles on these trails.
Okay, and were there any, there are bicycles that have motors too, but they were not allowed. Nor were the, these new tricy, what do they call them? The.
The e-scooters.
The e-scooters, yeah.
Correct. So just some background, you know, they did, they did speak to some of the speed. And some of the cities that did approve these, for example, Fort Collins, and before they actually allowed to have e-bikes, bicycles on their path, which. Fort Collins is known for their bicycle, they're a bicycle community. And they actually did a study. They did a pilot program before. Allowing electric bicycles. And what they did was they actually did a speed survey. On all the, the electric bicycles that were being done. And they actually, the fastest they would go is about twelve miles an hour. And, and that's, and actually, right now, our current speed limit for our trails are actually at twelve miles an hour. So. That was a study that they've done. And typically, if you're talking about the demographic of people who actually purchase electric bicycles. Electrical bicycles, some of them are three or four hundred dollars, but most of them are up to fifteen to twenty-four hundred dollars. They're very expensive. Devices. So people who have that typically, maybe, maybe retired, they're going for recreation purposes. So they're not typically going to be those people who will be speeding down the pathways.
How fast can a bicycle, I mean, a bicycle that you're pedaling, some of those, you could.
People can go very fast. I mean, it just depends on, on what kind of physical condition that you're in. I mean, people can go upwards of fifteen, twenty miles an hour. I mean, anywhere from the people that are. Competing at the Pueblo Classic Criterion, they go up to thirty miles per net, per hour, but obviously, they're not going to be on that, hopefully not.
So what's the process going to be for additional signage if this is passed?
So that's something that we'll have to look into. I think that that's also very important for education, especially just either, even if there wasn't electric bicycles there. I think that's also important anyways in general for. Conveying education as far as trail etiquette. People don't understand trail etiquette, even if there wasn't electric bicycles, people have to understand that. And that's something that. We'll work with Parks and Recreation to start trying to do some educational classes or videos or even just signage.
Thank you.
Councilor Maestra?
You know, ownership of these bicycles, you, you have a point, you know, you, most of the time they're. Owned by more responsible people who respect their bicycle. Thing that concerns me on the e-scooters is we see. People flying all over the city streets, all over the city, misusing and abusing the rented e-scooters. So now you've got a mix. And I think that's the concern that anybody that's came up here and spoken about. Is, is there a way to, to modify this?
Yes.
Ordinance because. You know, Mr. Holmes needs it for what he does and he's obviously a responsible user of his e-bike. But they're encountering, she's encountering people who, I mean, that are just completely and totally irresponsible. I mean, you can't walk down Union in the evening, later in the evening, and they're flying all over sidewalks. Everywhere with these scooters. You're finding these scooters all over the place. And they're at high speeds. They're jumping curves. They're doing every single thing that they can do, how they get a, there, a lot of them are young, so I don't, I guess they must have a little credit card or debit card or something that they're using to rent it with. But it's a total abuse of. Of what it's meant to be used for.
Yeah, that's a good point that you bring up because actually, right now, if you've ever taken those scooters, when you get on the scooter, there isn't actually, there's an app. And I've taken it before. And for example, if I have a meeting from where I am at D Street and I have to go down Main Street, the. The e-scooter will actually die as I'm going over Main Street. And the reason why they have that is because. The bird scooter, who's the. Owner of, the actual owner of the e, e-scooters, they actually have a, a zone. That, that basically it kills the motor. So when you're actually going over Main Street, you have to push it up the hill because it dies because it can't read. It's a GPS layer. That tells a device to, to actually shut off the motor for that area. So. E-scooters are not allowed on the Riverwalk. So if this becomes an issue on the levy. Then that's actually something that they can put in their GPS layer to actually have it set, set. The engine will actually shut down automatically and they won't be allowed to, they won't be able to actually. Go down the levy trail with a e-scooter because the motor will die and it won't be fun for them. So they won't continue to be on that. So that is something they could do.
It'd sure be nice if they had other sensors like on the sidewalk where they're not supposed to be. You know, cut it off at twelve miles per hour.
Right.
And a whole bunch of other things, because.
Yeah, and I don't.
See a lot of issues of those things.
So I don't know about their current technology, how they can do that. I know the city of Denver had a lot of issues with that. And they have, and I don't know if they have the same type of bird scooters or whatever, but I know that at certain corners, they have to slow down to actually nine miles per hour when they're. Going near pedestrian, heavily pedestrian trafficked area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Sure. Yep.
That on, yeah, I forgot. So there is no way that I can tell to enforce any of these rules other than signage. And, you know, it's popular to drive ninety-five miles an hour when the speed limit is seventy-five. The other thing is, is there's no way to report an infraction. Somebody speeds by on whatever kind of conveyance that they've got. Oh, who am I supposed to call about that? So there's no way to enforce it and no way to report an infraction.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is that so? Is there no way of enforcement?
I mean, I think that if somebody can report it to the police, or I know they have park rangers going up and down all the time. It is very difficult to, to try to manage that at this time, but I know that there are times where you probably can't, there's a ranger that is there. I know that. If you get your dog off the leash, they appear out of nowhere and they yell at you for doing that. So I think that that's something that they should be able to enforce, although it's very hard because as she mentioned earlier. Twenty-six miles, that's a lot of ground to cover. So I, I cannot speak to that. That would have to probably be Parks and Recreation that could probably talk about that, but.
Yeah, is there like a penalty involved if you?
I think right now it's like a thousand dollars, but I'm not completely sure. I don't, I, I don't know.
So we're. Are there, are we doing any kind of enforcement on this, on the ones that are flying up and down the sidewalks? Here in the city? Are we doing any kind of enforcement or is it a free-for-all? Because it looks like a free-for-all. And I know that there's a lot of complaints, a lot of people complain. And just even like coming from a restaurant, going walking to your car. On Union Avenue, all of a sudden, here they come, flying. Off the curb, onto the next sidewalk. And then I'm, I didn't think they were supposed to even be on sidewalks.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the police taking anybody into custody or writing tickets or anything like that at this point. We could.
So it's a free-for-all?
Pardon me?
It's basically a free-for-all.
Well. No, people act responsibly. You know, most people are supposed to act responsibly.
Yeah, but that's not happening. I mean, that's witnessed by many people. I mean, when you talk to constituents, they, they complain a lot about the scooters.
I haven't heard a single complaint. Have them call me. Have them call me. If your constituents are calling, have them call me and we'll, once we. Get a list of those things that are going on, we'll, we'll deal with it. But I, we haven't heard any complaints in the mayor's office about those scooters.
Okay. We'll send them to your office then. Great.
Councilor Flores?
I just wanted to say that, you know, there's lots of things that we, we can't enforce because you can't be everywhere at once, but. I think this is also a legal liability issue where we need to at least. Have something in our ordinances that tries to control it. And if we're not enforcing it, that's another issue that we need to deal with, but. I, I think we need ordinances like this in order to. You know, one thing that's a fact, if you get online. And see the number of accidents that are occurring in the United States because of these e-scooters. I had one happen right in front of me, right, right in front of City Hall. This young girl could not control it. She was going too fast. She hit the curb and. And she bounced back up, but she, you could tell she went to her friend that she was really in pain. And. So. You know, it's. It's an issue of, we've always allowed bicycles on there. And. They're not just pedestrian walkways. I mean, there's other uses for that, those walkways. So we got to kind of balance the two. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I, can I just add one more thing? So earlier, actually about a year ago last year. I worked with the county to apply for a grant for forty-two e-bicycles for. Income-qualified essential workers. And we were able to give forty-two individuals. Electric bicycles. And they were very happy because a lot of these individuals actually walked to work and/or had to use transit. And. You know, we do have some good infrastructure here. We do have bike lanes. We have some bike routes. Unfortunately, not a lot of people respect those. Bicycle riders. So a lot of them feel like the trails are the safest way for them to get to their places of work. So I mean, that's just another, you're thinking of another mode. Earlier, the gentleman said that he uses that too, but that's also, you know, something to consider when you're thinking about it. Yeah, it's a great recreation, but there's also for people who use that as their main source of transportation. They utilize those trails because it is safe. They don't have to contend with motorized vehicles not respecting their distance. So thank you.
Councilor Martinez.
Um, earlier you said that the state has changed this as a statewide ordinance, so Pueblo would just be matching that language. Do you know how many other communities across the state have also mirrored the state's language on this?
Um, I could probably name about six of them, six or seven off the top of my head.
Councilor Maister.
I I guess I'll just throw this in. There's stuff, I mean, I'm down there all the time, and there's definitely an etiquette that goes on when, if you're running and there's a bicycle that comes up behind you, they usually say on your left. I think for the most part, everybody's pretty sufficient and polite. I've never had any problems other than with homeless people, not bicycles. That's all I have to add.
Okay. Did you have something, sir, that you wanted to add?
On our Thursday night bike rides, we have several people that ride electric bikes, and they ride them respectively. That's the main thing. But I want to mention one gentleman that his son is getting larger and larger and larger, larger, and he has a disability. He's now changed over to a bicycle, but I believe it's probably a class three because his son is large. So situations like this, I think there should be a loophole where this, this gentleman can ride with us because sometimes we go down, we go down the trails and we really enjoy it. We we just love it, the Thursday night ride. We have upwards of fifty bikes sometimes. So keep in mind that there will be certain situations where this gentleman used to ride a regular bicycle, but his son is is large. And so just remember that there should be somehow, we have special consideration for those that are pulling handicapped people, their their family members on their bicycles, so that they can participate in in these bicycle rides. It's a fantastic thing to have. When I, when I started to move to Pueblo and I thought about it, I looked and I thought, my gosh, look at the public access. Look how much public access the former people in this city have allowed people to have. And it's just mainly, just respect it and it'll stay that way. I tell everybody that the state will begin to contract the availability of public areas because they, they don't have, they, they can't, they pop, they can't possibly clean up after all the people. They have, what do we have, three hundred campsites, they have picnic spots. I concentrate on micro, just micro trash, because this is what, I'm working for the wildlife. That's the one I'm concerned about. The state can pick up potato chip bags, things like this, Coke cans. But there are millions and millions of plastic pieces to close bread caps, bottle caps, beer caps, everything like this. So just keep in mind, remember that some people will need special permission to ride a class three if if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, let's vote. Pass the six one.
Item R seven, public hearing and ordinance approving and accepting an agreement between the city of Pueblo and the U.S. Department of Justice for alcohol, tobacco, and firearms regarding reimbursement of police personnel overtime and other expenses accrued while working joint operations. Introduced August eighth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Good evening, members of council, council president and Mr. Mayor. Number R seven is a MOU between the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms regarding reimbursement of overtime expenditures for our two TFOs that authorizes the expenditure of thirty-three thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and fifty cents for the two officers for the year for overtime costs to cover their work related to the ATF, both here locally and on occasion when they respond to other other locations. That that in staff's report.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. Pass the seven zero.
Item R eight, public hearing and ordinance submitting Title eleven of the Pueblo Municipal Code of the addition of a new chapter thirteen related to the creation of community service officer position and establishing authority and enforcement powers in accordance therewith. Introduced August eighth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am, council president, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This amendment or this ordinance authorizes the establishment of the community service officer's position and their enforcement of powers within the ordinance. If you'll remember earlier this year, council approved the hiring of four CSOs to fulfill those roles. They just graduated from the academy, I think, two weeks ago and are in their street level training right now. I think this is the set beginning of the second week of that training out of six weeks. And then they'll be out on their own. This would give them the authority to issue certain municipal summonses in in that kind of thing. So that
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Any discussion? Councilor Martinez.
So Chief, if I did mental math correctly, that's four weeks until they're out in the field.
Yes, ma'am, we can't come fast enough.
All right, call for the vote. Pass the seven zero.
Item R nine, public hearing and ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, the special municipal election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. A question relating to the extension of the one-fifth percent, point two percent sales and use tax rate for five years for police personnel and operating costs and the adoption of ordinance number one zero two six zero to implement the extension introduced August eighth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Larry Tencio.
May we have a staff report?
Yes, Madam President, members of the council. This ordinance will submit to the voters this November. The continuation of the point two percent sales tax for public safety, safety. Originally passed in twenty seventeen, it expires December thirty-first of this year. Since twenty eighteen, when we first started collecting monies here, the public safety tax has collected approximately fifteen million dollars, which has been used exclusively for the police department to allow for the hiring of new officers and for the equipment they need to keep us safe. This tax is allowed for the hiring of four, four sergeants in the police department, twenty officers in the Pueblo Police Department. It's allowed us to purchase seventy vehicles over the last four years and seven trucks for the police department, and has also allowed us to purchase one hundred and ninety body-worn cameras for our police officers. If passed by the voters, this measure would continue the tax for an additional five years, and it would sunset again. It does not increase the tax that's currently being imposed, and a dot does not change in any way the use of the tax if it's passed by the voters. Failure to put this matter on the ballot or to pass it by the people certainly would be a defunding of the police department in the city of Pueblo. In this age of rising crime, failing to adequately fund the police department would be a serious mistake in my judgment. We're already having a difficult time hiring police officers, an adequate number of police officers, and failing to pass this measure would only compound that problem. We wholeheartedly urge the adoption of this ordinance, and we urge the voters to pass this ordinance when it's on the ballot in November. You heard a work session from Chief Noler a month or so ago on the public safety tax, and he's available here today, tonight, to answer questions. That concludes staff's report.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do I have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Any discussion? Councilor Maister.
Um, I'm I'm actually for this, you know, we need to keep our police department funded as much as possible. And that's about three million a year, Mayor. It's about three million a year, right? Okay, so my my concern. My concern is, you know, it goes out to the voters to make a decision. And, you know, I I hope that they make that decision. But I was wondering, do you have a plan B to put it into your budget for twenty twenty-three if this does not pass? Okay, thank you.
Councilor Tencio.
Yeah, I see that you're spending quite a bit on equipment and I hope we're spending more on personnel than we are. Is there the balance, I'm hoping the balance is there, maybe that's what I'm trying to say.
The 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 sales tax funds twenty-four officers, four sergeants, twenty patrol officers. And those, those funds are used out of that money to pay for twenty-four officers. There are four sergeants and twenty officers, that their salaries and benefits are paid for through the public safety sales tax. We do buy equipment with that, a lot of needed equipment. We don't have a budget line item for vehicles. This money provides our ability to purchase vehicles for our fleet, for the entire fleet of of the police department. It also allows us to buy body-worn cameras, as you know, or or maybe you don't. In twenty twenty-one, the state legislator made it, legislature made it a requirement that all officers that have contact with the public would wear a body-worn camera. We started that back in two thousand fourteen, so we were kind of ahead of the curve. Our detectives being the exception at the time, they were not, we didn't think about them wearing cameras. We had our patrol officers that were out on the street every day wearing cameras. So it's purchased those additional cameras. It's paid for our body-worn cameras since two thousand eighteen. Our tasers, it pays for training, it pays for a lot of things, and you're right, equipment is one of them. The drones would be an example of some of the, some of the equipment that we've purchased with the PSST tax.
I just realized I had forgotten that the twenty officers, the four sergeants were the crux of the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
And that's what the ordinance and the tax was all about. I had just forgotten the number is all in. I I think my concern wasn't bought out completely. I I'm glad that the twenty and the four are are the main part of the whole thing.
Any other questions?
The body-worn cameras, they were put into effect by law when, for what year?
We started in twenty fourteen. The law was passed in twenty-one. They required the sworn officers, and I should, I should be more specific in case somebody, I am not required to wear a camera, or my deputy chiefs are not required to wear a camera, or captains aren't required to, but our patrol captains do. So, but detectives, when they go out in the field now, based on this law, are required to wear a camera unless they're interacting with a confidential informant or or doing some kind of undercover activity.
Right, thank you. Good thing for the tax.
Councilor Martinez.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that we will actually have a public safety sales tax work session on September sixth, where we can ask more questions as well. And that's actually from our friends at the fire department will be showing their support for this tax as well.
Anybody else? All right, call for the vote. Pass the seven zero.
Item R ten, public hearing and ordinance submitting to the eligible electors of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, at the special municipal election to be held Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two. The question of reestablishing the city's authority to provide or to facilitate or partner or coordinate with service providers for the provision of advanced high-speed internet service, cable television service, and telecommunications service, either directly, indirectly, or by contract to residential, commercial, nonprofit government or other subscribers, and to acquire, operate, and maintain any facility for the purpose of providing such services, restoring local authority and flexibility that was removed by Title twenty-nine, Article twenty-seven, Part one of the Colorado revised statutes without increasing taxes. Introduced August eighth, twenty twenty-two by Councilor Larry Tencio.
We have a staff report.
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, that was quite a mouthful. And to make matters, to simplify matters, this ordinance is referred to as the Senate Bill one fifty-two opt-out ballot issue. It will submit to the voters of the city of Pueblo in this November's election, a, an issue to opt out of Senate Bill one fifty-two. Senate Bill one fifty-two was passed by the legislature in two thousand and five. And it was designed to prevent governments from competing with the private sector in providing internet services. An election is required before the city of Pueblo can cooperate with broadband companies to expand services to our community. You know that there's a tremendous amount of money available for broadband services now. But until we opt out of Senate Bill one fifty-two, we're not able to enter into partnership agreements or cooperative agreements with those broadband companies because of of this, this Senate bill. If this passes, it will not require the expenditure of any public money of any of the city's tax dollars. None of that would have to be expended for, to expand these broadband services. And let me make it clear that the city of Pueblo has no intention of getting into the broadband service industry. We're not interested in providing internet service as a city to customers in the city. But we are interested, and we're partnering with broadband companies who have the ability to do that and to facilitate them to make sure that all of our residents have an opportunity for those high-speed internet services and not just allow them to cherry pick the ones that can pay the most rather than the neighborhoods that perhaps need it the most. We certainly learned during the pandemic, but that is a critical necessity for individuals is to have access to that high-speed internet, whether it's for educational purposes or for for work. Since the inception of Senate Bill one fifty-two, more than sixty-eight municipalities in Colorado have opted out, as well as twenty-eight counties in Colorado have opted out and have passed their opt-out elections. So the expansion of broadband services to our entire community will require innovation and new techniques. Two new techniques and opting out of Senate Bill one fifty-two is one of the necessary steps to that goal. Passage of this ballot issue by the voters will allow the city to partner with broadband service providers to expand the broadband services that are available to our citizens. And we have here, if you have questions tonight, co-creates Sal LaCuna and Denise Atkinson Shory, and also our IT Director Lori Pence, who can answer any technical questions, but we would ask your favorable consideration of this ordinance, which will place this measure before the voters in November. And obviously, we would urge the voters of the city of Pueblo to pass this so we can truly take advantage of these opportunities we have to expand broadband services in in the city of Pueblo. That concludes staff's report.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Please raise your right hands. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you should give before the Pueblo City Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your names for the record.
Salvador Acuna.
Denise Atkinson Shory.
Denise Atkinson Shory?
Shory.
Shory, thank you.
You want me to go first? Okay, oh, thank you. As the mayor said, there have been a number of counties and cities in the state that have chosen to opt out since twenty fifteen. And all of the initiatives that have been put before the voters have passed. And so every city or municipal or county that has looked into this has had incredible support from voters in their communities. Every community chooses to, to use their flexibility differently. So there's not one cookie cutter kind of thing that happens. It does provide flexibility and opportunity for, um, Pueblo to apply for grants. There are a number of grants that will have to come through the city or the county for application. And it would be difficult to enter into a partnership with a provider if we don't have, um, an opt-out for one fifty-two because you couldn't participate right now. And so, um, it's a pretty, it's a, it's not, it doesn't cost anything and it doesn't, um, it just gives you flexibility and opportunity. And when we look at, uh, cities like Fort Collins or Longmont or the Thor Project, which is in the northeast part of the state, um, everybody's had incredible success bringing connectivity and internet access by doing this.
Um, I guess, uh, being in the middle is for a while, especially looking at the community of Pueblo and what it means. And then, um, taking into consideration, um, how this Senate Bill one fifty-two has kind of been an impediment for communities and they realize that. Now, as we move forward to be able to, uh, self-direct our broadband future here in Pueblo, um, the fact that it will prevent opportunity if we don't do this is, is really significant. So the fact that being able to opt out will allow for the opportunity that we need to be able to focus on and develop, develop any type, any development, the development of any type of public, private strategy that we move forward with, whether it's collaborative grant making, whether it's developing innovative, um, approaches with providers that will be able to provide high-speed internet to those underserved areas that right now in many places in Pueblo, uh, don't receive the quality and/or the connectivity that they need to be participants in, in, in an all-growth economy. So it's in my mind, very fundamental that, you know, we would need to opt out of one fifty-two to be able to move forward and take advantage of the opportunities before us.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, do we have a motion to approve? Do you have a second? Um, okay, I just wanted to clarify one thing. So we've already granted Co-create a hundred thousand dollars. And if this ballot initiative does not pass, that was a waste or?
It's, it's not a waste. I don't, it's not a waste at all.
They can't apply for grants if we don't opt out? Is that what you're saying?
Apply for grants, but we can't partner with private companies to expand broadband services. So we can apply for grants, but we can't, we can't partner with companies to enter into partnerships or even sharing agreements for such simple things as if we have conduit that has additional space in it. With Senate Bill one fifty-two prohibits us from entering into an agreement to let a company use that conduit space to take conduit into a low-income neighborhood. Because that's sort of deemed to be doing business, you know?
Doing business, yeah.
Yeah, and.
I might add, um, we, we can still apply for those grants. But if we can partner with another provider or with, um, another entity that might be doing some component of it, it will grow the opportunity for the grant money and for the, instead of getting five dollars, we could get fifty-five dollars. And we can't do that right now with the way one fifty-two is. And lots of other cities and counties across the state have recognized that and have been very successful at overriding and finding creative ways to make it work.
It's, it's like, for example, it's like, you know, uh, it's being able to have twenty opportunities at a grant opportunity as opposed to two.
So have you applied for any grants thus far or are we?
Actually, we've already submitted letters of intent for three for the community of Pueblo.
This would just open it up to allow you to apply for more grants. Gotcha. Councilor Maestri?
So the hundred thousand that we paid you is for one year, correct?
Excuse me?
The hundred thousand that we paid you, was that for one year?
Actually, it's, it's for a little bit more than a year and a half. It's through December of twenty-three.
Okay, and after that, um, since we now we've got this new thing going where we're, you know, searching for grant money so that we can continue to do, because you're not going to be able to do it all the end, by the end of twenty twenty-three, are you? Are you going to be able to apply for these grants and get all the upgrades done? Or are we going to have to, um, come up with another hundred thousand to continue your services in order to, until we complete, get to a level of getting all the broadband that we need?
Well, I think, you know, uh, well, want to talk with what's available, the availability led after January?
There are a number of grants coming up through the BEED program that should open up in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three through first quarter of twenty twenty-four.
But depending on whether we get, receive the grants or not, it's whether we'll be able to, um, complete the project of installing the fiber optics to cover all of these disadvantaged areas, correct? I mean, it could, it could extend beyond twenty, twenty twenty-three.
It, it could, um. I, I can't promise anything there, you know, I don't know. I, I think the first step is let's see if we can get applications in and get them successfully funded.
And do you have an intent to apply on three?
We have three that we just submitted, um, in July. And are working with the State Broadband Office and the State, um, Office of Future Work, which is the Economic Development Arm as well.
So our, our current grant writer that works for the city through the city, they wouldn't be able to apply for these? We'd still need Co-create services?
Well, go ahead, Dan.
I drafted the contract with Co-create and it basically has two components. The first is that later this year, Co-create will give us a plan to extend broadband to, uh, low-income neighborhoods in the city. And the second part of the agreement is actually for Co-create to bring us in twenty twenty-three, actual contracts with providers to provide what they call the middle mile of broadband and the last mile of broadband. So that we can, we can wire the city, uh, including the low-income neighborhoods. The, uh, affluent neighborhoods, uh, are already connected. And the goal here is, is twofold. Come up with a plan and then, okay, bring the providers in. And by the end of twenty twenty-three, we will have, um, the contracts with the providers. That gives us, um, we, we have to commit the money. Again, we're going to use ARPA money for this in addition to other grants that Co-create will bring in. Uh, we have to commit the money by the end of twenty-four and spend the money by the end of twenty-six. So I, I think we're on schedule. They will come up with a plan and, uh, they'll make a presentation to council. But the hard work really is going to be done next year. And that is to sit down with the providers and we want everybody to participate. We're not just going to pick one. Uh, providers already have fiber in certain neighborhoods. Maybe they can extend it to a low-income neighborhood in the city's Y-zone. So, yeah, I, I, I think we're on schedule. Uh, and the, uh, the grant extends till the end of twenty-three, but I think by then, uh, their work will be done.
Okay, so just, just, uh, get right back down to the, I'll clarify it more for you. Uh, after twenty twenty-three, if the projects are not completed, my question was, is it something that our grant writers can take care of from that point forward if need be?
May, may, may I speak in, 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 on behalf of both Co-create and the grant writer? Um, the, the grant writer and I and Co-create have been meeting periodically, I would say every six weeks since the approval. We have a scheduled meeting tomorrow for the update. The three letters of intent that have been submitted in July, that Co-create is not in a position to be a, an applicant for any of the grants. Um, they have to come through the city and the letters of intent have to come from the mayor. Um, but the, the legwork and the subject matter expertise, for that matter, is Co-create working with our grant writer, um, who then will submit the grant on behalf of the city because only the municipalities are eligible applicants. And so we'll, we'll, we'll wait to see. Also in these grants, when we write them, there will potentially be an opportunity, uh, for contract work with additional subject matter expertise. And so we, we, I would suspect that the hundred thousand dollars in what they're submitting on a monthly basis in their work statewide, um, may be consumed within the next one year by December of twenty twenty-three. You know, if not sooner with respect to the, the research and the work that they're doing. Um, but, um, hopefully we'll have a response to submit the next level of, of a grant. These, these BEED grants, and if I remember right, broadcast, education, access, blah, blah. I'm not certain what, certain what the acronym means. Um, but, um, certainly there will be additional grant opportunities where the SMEs are providing the information to the grant writer who then assembles it, submits to the mayor, he's submitting it on behalf of the municipality. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
One of the things, I guess, one of the things that, that when you look at this, one of the strategies with respect to going after the resources is the development of, of a collaborative granting strategy where we will work with the city's grant writer and others, right? And in that process, the capacity will be built for variety of people to go after monies, not just one. So we want to be able to maximize the opportunity that we can create within the next year and a half by the time this is done. So the B dollars, which will be opening up, there's, that's just the first phase of it, right? So that's forty-two point five billion. Of that, about seventy percent of it is going to be allocated to the states. The states have to go through strategic planning process to clarify the projects that they're, they're, they're anticipating for this next year. So we're already on the docket for some of those projects with the three, the three layers of intent that we submitted. We'll know more specifically with the release of that application January or February of twenty-three. So then we'll be moving on the, on, on the first phase of, of, of the granting.
Thank you. Councilor Martinez, did you have something?
I guess with the three letters of intent that you all have already submitted through Co-create, when I know that letters of, I'm sorry?
With, through the city.
Oh, since the city, yeah. The three letters of intent. When it does, when will the city be notified on, um, if the intent was, if the application moves forward, just because letters of intent are far away from actually applying for a grant? When, when is the letter of, when will we hear about that?
Okay, this letter of intent was a little bit different. Because the state is a little bit behind with respect to their planning process. The letter of intent was a, pretty much a comprehensive assessment. By the time we were done with it, it was twenty-two pages. And so, uh, they utilized the letter of intent process to get an idea of what the potential projects are going to be. And this it, throughout, throughout Colorado.
Eighty-seven different letters of intent were submitted. And they are non-binding. So the city is not, um, is not bound to the letter of intent. But it does provide a, an opportunity for the Colorado Broadband Office to be aware of what we are looking at, what we would like to see happen in the city. And we're asking, that we want to ask for funding. And it gives us, um, awareness at the state level to advocate for us for the funding at the, that is federal. And so we, it gives, it gives the city, it puts the city in a much better oper, in a much better light, a bit, much better opportunity than all the other places that didn't do that. And then when they file a grant, they may not have the support of the state.
Letter of intent that was, um, submitted did not, um, the state information did not provide the response date.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I don't have a votes screen on.
Pass of seven zero. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to move to executive session. So do I have a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six, four oh two, four E, and the following additional details are provided for identification process. We need a vote, motion.
So move?
Second, no, we do, we do need to actually read the identification purposes.
Relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash forty, four oh two, print four, print E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to instruct negotiators regarding economic development project issues presented by the Pueblo Economic Development Corporation, acting as the agent for the city of Pueblo.
Hi.
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 Hi.